Good evening, welcome to the September 5th, 2012 meeting of the Murphysboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the July 18th, 2012, and the August 1st, 2012, Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have seven public hearings scheduled for this evening, we'll move right into that. The first one is the amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding parking requirements for multiple-family developments and hotels, motels. The planning department is the applicant. Mr. Adelot, good evening.
Yes, sir. The public hearing that we're going to conduct tonight on this matter has to do with our parking requirements. Earlier this year, we had a staff report regarding the parking requirements for hotels, motels, for multifamily developments, and for single-family residences. The Planning Commission determined that we should move forward to consider some amendments that involve the multifamily developments and the hotels and motels. The first part of it would be with regards to multiple-family developments, and that is to amend their zoning ordinance, Section 26, to allow parking in garages and apartment complexes, when the parking in those garages is limited to only use for parking, to be counted towards required parking. That seems to be something that will reduce our exterior parking, and actually it will have some benefits to the community, even in terms of stormwater management, so you don't have as much paved area. But we're getting still the number of parking spaces that's needed. The second part has to do with the hotels, the motels. A couple of weeks ago, we had a hotel on Salem Hill Dry and Conference Center Boulevard. There was a good example of what was the problem, and that is, our standard is 1.1 parking spaces per guest room. And their design, and their model, and their prototype indicates a need for one parking space per guest room. Their concern is that the 1.1 caused them to need more land and being able to build less building. They have pretty much convinced me, and apparently the standard is, in most communities, one space per guest room. So our standard is much more excessive. So we also determined to conduct a public hearing to consider that amendment as well. And that's also in Section 26, in the chart that deals with the off-street parking. Included with your agenda materials is basically what would be inserted into an ordinance format if this moves forward to the council. The Planning Commission needs to conduct a public hearing on these two amendments to Section 26 of the zoning ordinance, and then you'll need to prepare a recommendation. After the public hearing, before your deliberations, or during your deliberations, if you have questions of myself, I'm available to answer your questions.
Okay, a couple of questions, real quick. A few years ago, we had approved one hotel to be built with an underground parking garage. It would not affect that in any way, then?
No, it would not. That one actually has lapsed because of inaction, and it was zoned as a planned development, as happens. We'll probably see an amendment to change that zone in one of these days. But it looks like that particular plan has fallen through, and it would not affect that development plan.
Okay.
Question.
Mr. Young.
Mr. Adelot, in a multifamily development, if you had a garage situation, I had read or something, maybe in our discussion about, that the apartment complex would basically tell the tenant that he could not use that as a storage space, and it had to be used as a car parking garage?
Yes, sir.
But we wouldn't regulate that?
Well, the operative language is that parking spaces within garages for multifamily developments may be considered as required parking for purposes of this section, provided such spaces are used only for parking of automobiles. Spaces used or available to be used for the parking or storage of boats, recreation vehicles, trailers, equipment, or any other item are not to be so considered. If we become aware that someone, after approving the site plan, if we become aware that someone's storing these type of items, or using it for storage of just stuff, we would put them on notice that they're in violation of the site plan.
And we would enforce that?
Yes, we would.
We said you would enforce that, okay.
It's usually not very difficult to enforce that sort of thing, because once management, usually management doesn't want their space to be abused. They write into their leases, but we also, once we put them on notice, they're usually very good about complying with that sort of thing. Because if they don't have enough parking, they've got a problem in their development.
Well, they'd usually solve it themselves.
Yes.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak either for or against a proposal, please come to the microphone, state your name, and give your address. Hold your comments no more than three minutes, if you would, please. Make all your comments and questions to the Planning Commission. If you do have questions, we'll try to get them answered at the conclusion of the public hearing. That being said, I'll open the public hearing for this proposal, and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Anybody at all? Okay, close the public hearing. Is there any more discussion or questions from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I make the recommendation for approval.
Second. Motion's made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Moving on to the second public hearing, amendments to the zoning ordinance once again regarding Christmas tree sales, accessory to institutional group assembly uses. The planning department is the applicant. Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. This amendment has been motivated by the Boy Scouts of America, and a situation that they find themselves in in our community. The Christmas tree sales are often used as a fundraiser for a couple of the troops, particularly one in the Salem Pike area. And they are in a residential zone. We have a provision in our zoning ordinance that allows retail sales of Christmas trees associated with an institutional group assembly in a residential zone, subject to issuance of a special use permit. One of the requirements is that the user posts a $500 bond to sure cleanup after the sales are over. These type of sales are always done on a parent lot, or with a church use, because the Boy Scouts are very closely associated with the church which the troop is organized with. But they are not the church, so they are required to post the bond. But there is a parent organization, if you will, that is really responsible for the property, and will take care of the property, and would very likely not neglect the property. And were they to do so, we would have the ability to put them on notice, and take them with codes enforcement. The problem, though, for the Boy Scouts is that some of these troops, as a fundraiser, they find themselves posting $500 bond, and that really affects their ability to secure inventory to sell Christmas trees. Last year, this came up, Mr. Dan Ochs with the troop at the church, really made a very convincing argument to me that this is something we need to address. And I felt very comfortable in making this a recommendation to you. And what we want to do is that add an additional sentence, or some additional verbiage, to Section 6, subsection 6 of Section 25D of the zoning ordinance. And this is a section that authorizes sales of Christmas trees accessory to an institutional group assembly. And basically, the operative provision reads as, right now, as "Sales of Christmas trees accessory to institutional group assembly use, which uses include recreation fields, public buildings, public or private schools, grades K-12, lodges, country clubs, churches, and other places of worship shall be permitted in the RS-15, 12, 10, 8, 4, RD, RM-12, RM-16, RM-22, and RZ districts, subject to the additional standards in Section 92." And I want to add, and I'm recommending that you approve, provided that if the applicant provides written documentation from the owner of the institutional group assembly use, or duly authorized agent thereof, that the institutional group assembly use will be responsible for cleaning and clearing of the site within the time specified in Section 92, EEE-19AA. Should the applicant fail to do so, the applicant for such accessory Christmas tree sales use shall not be required to post a deposit as otherwise required by Section 92, EEE-6. That's kind of hard to follow, I understand, because of all the letters, the alphabet I used.
I thought you were stuttering.
But I think that this accomplishes what we want to do, and I think it will help the Boy Scouts to further their mission, and will not put the city in jeopardy of having messy property in our community.
Okay. Any questions?
Any questions?
Any questions from members of the Planning Commission? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing for this matter, and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
I just want to say thanks to Mr. Adelot.
Please give your name, sir, and address.
I'm sorry, I'm Dan Ochs with Boy Scout Troop 197 at 2511 Highway 99 South in Murphysboro. The folks he's talking about. I just want to say thanks to Matt, and thanks to Mr. Adelot for listening to me. About a year ago, I got a call from him, a couple of weeks ago, and I was surprised, pleasantly surprised, that they listened to us. And I only want to correct one thing that Mr. Adelot said, if I may. The troop is a ministry of the church, we are actually part of the church. If the church goes away, we go away and have to find a new home. So that's kind of the whole thing that we've been dealing with since we started six years ago, that we're not really a separate entity, we are part of the church. And Brother Don certainly understands that, and we certainly appreciate you doing what you did, sir, and Matt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate what you did. Anybody else? Nobody? I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a good example of where the city is constantly looking at its ordinances, and applying common sense approach to situations, and I hold heartily agree with this, and so I move for approval.
Motion's made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Third public hearing is amendments to the subdivision regulations regarding changes to subdivision plaits. The planning staff is the applicant. Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. This public hearing is going to be a little bit different than the previous two, and the ones we have later tonight. In this public hearing, we're going to consider an amendment to our subdivision regulations. As a subdivision regulation, it is your authority, and you will not be making a recommendation, but you will be taking action. Unlike a rezoning, or a zoning ordinance amendment like we've just done, where we make a recommendation to council, this is where you take action. So that is a preface. What I'm proposing tonight is that you make two relatively modest amendments to the zoning ordinance. Actually, it's four, but it really is a duplicate in two different sections of the subdivision regulations. And the first of them is that, and both of them deal with amendments to the plat. The first one is to add a provision that, once a final plat has been signed by one or more of the required signatories, but before it has been recorded, no alterations or additions of any kind may be made to any portion of the final plat without written approval of the planning director. And that would go into Section 3.11, into Section 4.10.1. Basically, the same provision at two places. The second amendment would be, after a final plat has been recorded, changes to correct mistakes made on the final plat may be made by filing a certificate of correction, prepared and signed by the surveyor of record. Any certificate of correction shall also be signed by the planning director prior to recording. Again, that would be put at two different places in the subdivision regulations. What has motivated this has been a little bit of confusion, and it also has been a little bit of long-term practice. What we want to avoid is that after all the signatories have signed the plat, that there are changes made before it is taken to the register's office to be recorded. When I first came to Murphysboro as a planner, it was the practice that, once the planning director signed the plat, he kept possession of it, and he took, he collected fees for it to be recorded, and his staff walked the plat to the register's office and recorded the plat. I've made many trips to the register's office when Mr. Welch was the planning director, and Mr. Cantrell was the planning director, to record plaits. Once the planning director signed it, there was no risk of there being any changes made to it, because it stayed in the possession of the planning staff until it was recorded. That practice changed when the county adopted the adequate facilities tax, and the development tax. With it, we agreed that we would sign the plat, give it to them, let them carry it to the county, and then make their peace with the county on the fee, and then they could get it recorded, before we issued a building permit. And that is our practice. What I wanted to be clear is, I don't want some maybe well-intended developer saying, you know, "I've got an afterthought, I want to change a street name." Or, "I've got an afterthought, you know, I can split that lot into two, and have two lots." And myself, the city engineer, the water and sewer staff, the Murphysboro Electric staff, not being aware that this small change has been made, although it may be minor in the scheme of things, it may be a big thing for us. When street names are changed, and we don't know about it, when someone calls in an emergency, we might not be able to respond properly. So it's really to keep changes from being made. And basically, the reason for the planning director's signature is, this planning director becomes a clearinghouse. If they want to make the change, they bring it to me, I look at it, and I say, "That deals with water and sewer, let's get them a call right quick, see if there's a problem." If there's no problem, we can make the change, go on about our business. If it's a problem, we say, "Hold on, don't do anything, go take care of this with water and sewer." So it will help to validate a practice. The second part, after the plat's recorded, I don't care how good everybody is, there's always going to be something that comes up. Sometimes it's a matter of spelling, sometimes it's a matter of a typographical error on the plat, and these don't come to light until the closing. The plat gets recorded before the closing, then at the closing, somebody's name was misspelled, or some deed reference was misprinted on the plat. These need to be changed, we can fix that. A certificate of plat correction can be done. The practice has been, as long as I can remember, the planning director signed the certificate of plat correction. If there's a complication, he contacts the department that's involved before he signs it. If everything's fine, it's signed, it's recorded, and no problems. Sometimes these can be quick. We don't want to hold people up when it's legitimate. If there's a problem, we want to catch it before it's a crisis. These two items are minor, but in the scheme of things, they are important, and I will urge that you adopt them. I have discussed this with some of the engineers in our community, because I wanted them to know about it, and they support it. They understand, they don't, this is not a problem from the industry side, that I'm aware of. So you need to have a public hearing on this, and then you need to take action. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions or comments before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, close the public hearing. If there's any questions or discussion, this is the time, otherwise, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item D, amendments to the zoning ordinance, Section 24, Article V, I guess that's 5C, to allow HI and LI zones to be eligible zones for PSO, which is a planned signage overlay district. Planning staff is the applicant. Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. This is another relatively minor amendment, and staff is going to recommend its approval. Basically, as we have been working with the Amazon site plan, the Amazon has been unusual in many respects, most of the unusual elements have been because of its size. It's just a very large building, with a very large parking lot, with a, well, just everything about it is big. I guess the name Amazon fits it well, it is big. But the problem we have is that this is going to have a lot of shipping and receiving, a lot of employees, a lot of visitors to the place, and there needs to be directional signage that helps people find their way around, to know where to go, and to do it safely, and effectively, and efficiently. The place is well-laid out, the design will help with that, but the signage will be what really helps to finish it up. As they made application for their signage permits, they found that some of the signs that they really needed, and we believe that they need, would not be permitted. Also, the size of their sign that they want to place attached to the building, once it was attached to the building, if it met our size requirements, I would liken it to the little corporate logo at the bottom of the screen, placed upon the building. You can hardly see it, you can't read it. So they actually demonstrated to us that, because of the distance from the road, because of the size of their building, they actually needed the ability to have a little bit larger sign attached to the building, so that it would actually look better, if you can believe that. Usually, I think of the, we think of smaller signage as better signage, that's not always true. Signage needs to be in the appropriate scale with which it's attached. In this case, we believe that a little bit larger signage than our sign ordinance would allow is appropriate, in this particular instance, because of the scale of the site, the distance from the road, the size of the building. With these being a problem, we suggested that we investigate the ability to have a planned signage overlay, similar to what we've done with the avenues, the Stones Over Mall, and with Middleton City Medical Center. As we looked at our ordinance, we found that we had not allowed this type of signage except in the gateway overlay district, on land zone commercial highway, or zoned planned unit development. Well, obviously, Amazon is not in the gateway overlay district, and it should not be. Obviously, it's already zoned heavy industrial, that's why they chose their site, and it's not a planned development. And it's not zoned commercial highway. Meets the size requirements of over 20 acres. We felt that staff could be very comfortable in recommending that, now that we've had some experience with this type of signage approach, to expand our zoning ordinance to allow PSO signage in the heavy and light industrial zones. So that is precisely what this public hearing is for. And as I was sitting here, my little laptop went out. So we're recommending this amendment to our zoning ordinance. You need to conduct a public hearing on this amendment, and then you need to make a recommendation to council. We have with us Mrs. Amelia Kerr, she's an audience, and she's available to help answer questions, along with myself and Mr. Ives, if you have them, about this amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Kerr, or any comments? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item E, the zoning request for approximately 85 acres along Joby Jackson Parkway to be zoned PSO, which is planned signage overlay. U.S. Real Estate Limited Partnership care of Matt Taylor is the applicant. Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. Included with your agenda materials is a PSO application package that Mr. Matt Taylor has prepared on behalf of his client. The, well, you already told us who it was in the introduction remarks, U.S. Real Estate Limited Partnership. This outlines, basically, what they are making as their PSO amendment. It outlines the type of signs, the size of signs, the placement of signs. It will be able to happen under the amendment that we just made to the zoning ordinance. Ms. Amelia Kerr has worked very much with this program, she's been working with the signage for several weeks. If you have questions about this signage package, I would ask that you address them to her. Mr. Matt Taylor is also here, he's the gentleman who has been working very much on this project, start to finish, Mr. Taylor has been working on it. He put together this program book to explain the signage package. Of course, myself and Mr. Ives also are available to answer questions. You need to conduct a public hearing on this PSO application, and then you need to deliberate, and then make a recommendation to council.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Commission? Ms. Kerr, did you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, due to the size of this facility, and the numerous roads coming in and out, I think signage is going to be very important, to get the right people at the right place, the vendors in the right drives, and the employees in the right situation. And due to the scope of this, it needs to be fixed, and I think this is a good fix, and we've used this same approach in several other situations, such as the avenues. So we're not plowing new ground, we're just including a new property with it. So with that, I'll move for approval.
Motion's made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item L, zoning application for approximately 2.4 acres along Old Las Casas Highway to be rezoned from PRD to RM16, Rashid Shager Wallace, applicant. Ms. Ealy?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
Did I wake you, I'm sorry.
No, you didn't, I was just watching Bill. I think we have a presentation prepared for us. But this next public hearing is to consider rezoning approximately four parcels from PRD to RM16. The property is located along the western side of Old Las Casas Highway, so I know some people who called me were a little confused, they thought this was on Las Casas Highway. The properties to the south and to the east are zoned multifamily residential district. Property to the north of PRD, that's plain residential district. This property was zoned, RM16 multifamily residential district, several years ago. Mr. Agarwal, who was also the applicant who requested a zoning change at that time, requested the properties be rezoned from RM16 to PRD to allow what we call rooming house, is essentially apartments, and they were geared to college students due to the location, but without the kitchen facility. Mr. Agarwal met with Mr. Adelot and myself, and I think maybe forgot some of the details of the plans, and presented a proposal for some more traditional-style apartments, which would include a full kitchen, in addition to the living spaces. And looking at the PRD program, we advised Mr. Agarwal that he'd have several options if he wanted to continue down that route, one of which would be to amend the PRD program book, or to change the zoning. I guess after thinking about it, Mr. Agarwal chose to go back to the zone that it was before he zoned at PRD, which is RM16. He does own some of the properties that are contiguous with this parcel to the west, so there would also be the possibility of maybe adding these parcels to land he already owns, and doing a little bit better of a plan, because they would have more space to work with, and to be able to provide the amenities that we would expect in a multifamily development. You should conduct a public hearing before making your recommendation. After considering the item, then you should forward your recommendation to the city council. But I think before opening the public hearing, Mr. Huddleston, do you have some information you'd like to provide?
I do, thank you, Ms. Ealy.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Dr. Agarwal. We've been working on this project for a pretty good while now. Back in what we like to refer to as the good old days, when things were going great, Dr. Agarwal was looking to do a little different project. He was looking to do what's called a rooming house, and that's what the PRD zoning was approved for. The rooming house doesn't really have a kitchen of any kind. As we explored, or as he explored, this type of use, he started realizing that you really need some sort of kitchen. College students do eat in their rooms, if they're not eating out, or in the school facilities. Now, in this particular instance, as we got to working again with staff, and trying to figure out what we want to do, I don't want to put words in Mr. Adelot's mouth, but he was pretty uncomfortable, I think, with the rooming house project. We, and my client, became very uncomfortable with the rooming house project. It just turned out to be not what the market called for, and not what he wanted to do. He wants to do, basically, a regular apartment project for student housing. What you see in a lot of these are four bedrooms, three or four bedrooms, and then a common living room type area, and a common kitchen area. The bedrooms do have locks on them, but, and the suite itself has locks on it, but that's more of a traditional student-type housing, and that's what we're looking for here. So tonight, we're here to ask to go back to a traditional RM16 zoning, so that we can develop this project, that we show a conceptual here on this board. Also, to the right, there's a small sort of picture of what we anticipate this project to look like. Mr. Mike Pickleseimer, who's done a lot of work here in the past, is the architect. And I'll pass around a picture, so you can see it better, you might not be able to see it on the board too well. So having said all that, once again, we are asking for a traditional RM16 zoning. Now, this project, we meet all the setbacks, we meet all the parking, we'll meet all the landscaping requirements. We'll meet all the requirements, except for one thing, and that's the floor area ratio. These floor area ratios are something that's sort of continued in our zoning ordinance for a long time. I'm not sure really how applicable they are now. You know, given our rules, there's plenty, as you see, plenty of green on this project. We'll be able to satisfy stormwater on-site. we'll be able to satisfy stormwater on-site. Again, landscaping, setbacks, parking is all there. But we're not able to satisfy this floor area ratio. So what we're sort of looking for tonight from you, not only is our RM16 zoning, but whether you have some comfort in us going to the BZA to ask for a variance from that ratio, right? The ratio is .35 in the zoning ordinance. Basically, that's saying that you take your floor area and divide it by the total area of land, and that fraction should not be more than .35. We're actually going to end up with .45. We've got a three-story building here. That picture may show four stories, but it's actually just three stories. And so we don't meet that floor area ratio. We end up with about a .45, which exceeds the .35 in the zoning ordinance. So if it's okay with you, we'd like to find out if you're comfortable with us going to BZA to ask for that variance. And I will stop there and answer any questions.
Well, maybe before you ask questions, I'd like to chime in something, too.
Yes, sir.
I'll kind of put this under the category of breaking news. This morning, Mr. Agarwal, Mr. Huddleston, and Mr. Pickleseimer, the architect, paid a visit to me in advance of the public hearing to let me know about this issue involving the floor area ratio, that in expectation of a approval of RM16 zoning in a more traditional multifamily approach. They had already begun to go a little bit beyond the concept stage of the development plan to begin the shape of site plan. The issue of the floor area ratio had become apparent to them. And I suggested, well, at this point in time, it's a little bit late in the game to be amending your PUD, or the PRD. It's just too late. You can't do that tonight. That won't work. But it would be possible to make application back as a PRD if you wanted to. In fact, that's what they were thinking. I would suggest that they do. And then I said, the second thing is, it looks like there is an issue of hardship involved here. This is not the first complex that has really stumbled into this floor area ratio since we adopted our stormwater regulations. What's happened is the stormwater regulations, the landscaping requirements, the parking requirements, all that caused the floor area ratios to get out of whack from what would have been expected in 1984, when we adopted the floor area ratios that we currently have. We've never changed them. Since I've been here, we have never changed them, but we have increased our landscaping requirements dramatically. We do have a stormwater ordinance that now requires some land to be set aside that complicates this, and our setbacks. The thing about this development that causes me to be a little bit, I guess, sympathetic towards it is that it is the right use at the right place in our community. The highest and best and most appropriate use in our community for student housing is within walking distance of the university. That just makes sense. Every time a student can live near the university and have their trip ends, or their trips done by walking or bicycling, and have that capability pretty much year-round, it's good for the rest of the community, because it keeps them off our streets and keeps their cars off the streets. So with that being the case, I feel that this place right here has probably the appeal. The number of units and the number of bedrooms is not excessive by any means, by comparison to other properties zoned RM16. So I suggested to the applicants to discuss the issue of the variance, because I think there is some hardship element when you look at the stormwater and the landscaping requirements, and the parking requirements. Keep that in mind. And the other part is, it might be time that we just amend the zone ordinance. There have been times, and I have discussed this with some of my other staff, our urban or environmental, with our city engineer, to just take those provisions out of Chart Two. Chart Two is the chart that does the bulk regulations, and it specifies the .35 to just in RM16, RM12, just to delete those out, because we accomplish the ends of having open space through landscaping, through the amenities, through the stormwater. So before our public hearing, I want you to keep that in mind. If you were to feel the variance approach is more appropriate than amend the ordinance, that's fine. If you feel that amend ordinance is the best approach, give me a signal. Next month, we'll have something back before you. Or if you think that no, a planned development approach is what we ought to do, then let the applicants know. I think that the economy has recovered enough that the applicant is actually ready to build something, and he's moving forward with wanting to get his design, so he can turn in the site plan. I'd be glad to answer questions before you have a public hearing.
I think an amendment to the ordinance sounds in order.
I tend to agree with that, Chairman. I think for this project, if they want to likely done with some other similar type circumstances, let them go ahead and go forward. We're pretty tonight with pursuing the BZA. If the ordinance can't catch up in time, you've got that option that I think we probably all be amenable to that. In the meantime, working on updating the ordinance to look at the overall issue.
Certainly, any ordinance man would have a public hearing as well. And certainly, I think anything that you're saying in that regard is tentative to hearing from anybody that might want to speak tonight, and we'll maybe firm up that after the public hearing.
Any other questions of Mr. Huddleston while he's up? Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Huddleston.
Yeah. Excuse me.
One quick.
Quick.
On the brick, how much composition is brick, can you write on this?
It's almost 100% brick and glass.
This building that you're seeing is from a community that I've visited. Actually, I liked it. Me and Ms. Logan went over there a couple of years ago and looked at it. It's in Franklin, Tennessee, in McKeon Place. And it's a masonry building. It's a more urban type of use. This is a four-story building in the photograph, but a three-story building could carry much of the same design elements. I was surprised when they came in and showed me this is what they want to build, because it's what I'd suggested.
Mr. Hall, book.
Mr. Huddleston, Dave, both Ms. Ely and Mr. Adalot mentioned amenities. What amenities are we speaking of that would be part?
Glad you asked. If I can find them.
We'll have visited again at site plan, won't we?
That's correct, but I'd like to go ahead and tell you about it. Dr. Agarwal's real excited about this project. He's going to provide an elevator, which is not required and you don't often see in student housing. Looking at a clubroom with a big screen TV, a billiard room, also a storage room for the residents, a 24-hour fitness room for the residents, there'll be outdoor grilling area with a picnic table, high-speed internet access, resident cyber lounge with fax, copier, printer, and coffee bar, Wi-Fi in all public areas. Bike racks is encouraged by Mr. Adalot. Laundry facilities. He's going to be, you're going to be able to get a short-term lease. There'll be 24-hour emergency maintenance, and some of these units will be furnished as well.
And I think they may have discussed the possibility for some electric car chargers to be available for the residents.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adalot, I've got two other questions. Just, you talked about this floor area ratio. Is that ratio or the math based upon the total floor area of the whole building, or just the base floor area of the building?
It's all the floors combined, but certain elements are excluded. For instance, common areas like hallways are excluded, stairwells are excluded, uncovered patios or porches or decks are excluded.
So the higher you go up, the, in essence, the higher your ratio's going to be, correct?
Well, potentially, it will increase.
Right, right. Okay.
A four-story would never work here, because it would have blown out the...
That's my point, or question, okay. And then, I just want to make sure that with the thought process, that you're going to have four bedrooms in a particular unit, okay? Knowing that all four of these individuals will, in all likelihood, have their own vehicle, that whatever parking requirements that we have for a project like this, that the ratio is going to be taken care of in reference to those parking requirements?
Yes, they will. I made sure, when I talked to him this morning, I wanted to inquire, are you meeting all of our parking requirements? Not only are they meeting them, they're exceeding them. And what the requirement standard is, it's 1.1 parking space per bedroom.
Okay.
Which...
Per bedroom, that had nothing to do with units, then?
Right. For a unit with two or more bedrooms, it's based upon the bedrooms. 1.1 parking space per bedroom. And I can very confidently tell you that was, in my report, was more than any other community requires of the 12 communities, that all of which have major universities had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
How much visitor parking is involved?
What number of spaces were visitor parking, over above the...
We're looking at 176 parking spaces, and it's going to be somewhere 155 units, I think, somewhere in there. So 15 over that's 170, so, excuse me, it's 1.1 per bedroom, so that's 10% higher than the number. So if you have a four-bedroom unit, we require 4.4 parking spaces. So if each of the students had a car, that'd be four parking spaces, and then you've got 10% more than that. And we're exceeding that by eight or nine spaces.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Huddleston.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like Anybody at all? I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adalot, we had a letter here from Mr. Bob Frank pertaining to a privacy fence. Is that something we'll be addressing at a future, at a site plan?
Yes, we will be, and I was real careful to take my opportunity to address it this morning with the applicant and his design team. And I heard, they heard very clearly about my concern for Mr. Frank. And actually, on this concept plan they brought to me, they already had a privacy fence on it before it did. I shared with them Mr. Frank's situation. Mr. Frank isn't able to be here tonight, he's under the weather. But I am aware of his situation, and I have conveyed it, and we will return to that when we review the site plan in whatever form that site plan comes, whether it's RM16 zoning or planned development.
There's no further questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making the motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
And that is with also the expectation, based on discussion, that we move forward to amend the zone ordinance to...
Yes, sir.
...address the floor area ratios.
Let them work simultaneously, parallel to each other.
We'll do it. We'll be bringing back something next month, next meeting.
Okay. Move on to the final public hearing of the evening. That is a street renaming study for a portion of County Farm Road to be renamed to Joby Jackson Parkway. The planning staff, the applicant. Mr. Blomley, it's good to see you tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Good to see you, and good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of the planning commission. As you mentioned, we're looking at a street renaming for a portion of County Farm Road. It's the portion of County Farm Road that is bounded on its west side by South Church Street, and on its east side, ironically enough, by Joby Jackson Parkway. We're looking at renaming this to, this section of County Farm Road to Joby Jackson Parkway in conjunction with the Joby Jackson Parkway road construction project. The city of Murfreesboro is tentatively scheduled to begin construction of the Joby Jackson Parkway extension from I-24 to South Church Street in the fall of this year. The construction project is scheduled to be a 24-month project and will be funded jointly by the state of Tennessee, the city of Murfreesboro, and Rutherford County. This project was included in the city's 1995 major thoroughfare plan, which was approved and recorded in 1998. In addition, it is also included in Rutherford County's long-range transportation plan. There are two separate existing segments of Joby Jackson Parkway. The existing easternmost segment, which is five lanes, is located between I-24 and Manchester Pike. This is the area where, of course, the Amazon fulfillment center is being constructed. This roadway segment and the associated I-24 interchange were completed in 2003. The existing westernmost segment, which does not currently have lane markings, was constructed as a part of the Stevens Bend subdivision. It was named Joby Jackson Parkway in anticipation of the upcoming road improvement project that will connect it to the easternmost segment with this project that will begin in the fall of this year. The planning commission approved the final plat for Stevens Bend Section 1 with the Joby Jackson Parkway road name in 1998. In May of this year, the planning commission approved a site plan for a new Walmart to be located at the southeast corner of South Church Street and County Farm Road. Improvements to the westernmost segment of County Farm Road from U.S. 231 East to the Stevens Bend subdivision are included in the road construction project. The approved Walmart development will be oriented to face this westernmost segment of County Farm Road. Walmart has actually applied for building permits, and we have brought this renaming to you today in anticipation of the construction of the Walmart, and if Walmart had been oriented towards County Farm Road, it will be given a Joby Jackson Parkway address if you concur and decide to rename this segment of County Farm Road to Joby Jackson Parkway. The current intersection of County Farm Road and Joby Jackson Parkway at the Stevens Bend subdivision defies street naming protocol, as there is a 90-degree turn in County Farm Road, and it heads southward. The section of County Farm Road that heads southward would not be affected by this change. It would just be the segment that is from South Church Street to the Stevens Bend subdivision. As I mentioned, back in the 1990s, when both the cities and the counties' transportation plans were adopted, it was envisioned that this portion of County Farm Road would be renamed to Joby Jackson Parkway. With the Walmart approval and Walmart ready to begin construction, and with the road project in the very near future, now is a good time to visit the renaming of this segment of County Farm Road. The eastern half of this segment of County Farm Road is actually located in Rutherford County's jurisdiction. On August 6th of this year, the Rutherford County Road Board voted to rename the portion of County Farm Road that is within their jurisdiction to Joby Jackson Parkway. The western half of this segment of County Farm Road is located in the city limits, and the planning commission, as is our protocol, holds public hearings on any street naming, street renamings that occur within the city limits of Murfreesboro. There are 22 addresses that will be affected by this street name change, 20 of which are actually located in the county, and two of which are located in the city, even though the right-of-way is split about 50/50 between jurisdictions. We've been coordinating with the county, with the county planning department and the county road board, as I mentioned, and we will continue to do so to ensure that there is a smooth transition with the address changes from County Farm Road addresses to Joby Jackson Parkway addresses. If the planning commission approves this street name change, it will then go to the city council for ratification of the planning commission's action. In your agenda materials, we've included a brief study on this street name change. In the study, in the appendix, there are some photographs that you might find interesting of that intersection, the current intersection of Joby Jackson County Farm Road that I mentioned defies our normal protocol. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, if you have any questions for me.
Mr. Blomley, if the county road commission, or road board, was to not act on this, to change the name, where would we stand in that regard?
Good question.
Well, we've had that situation come up once before, and I believe that was with the Wilkinson Pike renaming to, or the Manson Pike renaming to Wilkinson Pike. And we ended up initiating an annexation study for that property and annexing that property. The county road board has, the more recent requests that we have worked with the county planning department on sending to the county road board, including numerous changes dealing with regards to Veterans Parkway, the county road board has concurred with both the city and county planning departments and voted to approve those.
So you feel we're inconcurment on all this, then?
Yes. As I mentioned, they voted at their August 6th meeting to approve.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Blomley. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. One at a time. Okay. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of this commission? What are the wishes of this commission?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Move on to staff reports and other business. Mr. Adalot.
Yes, sir. Included with the 2012, 2013 annual budget, the planning staff requested funding for laptops, well, not laptops, but iPads for planning commission members so we can head towards an electronic agenda in the same fashion that the council has. Two of our members are council members and y'all already have them, so we didn't budget for you all. Y'all can use the same ones. But at next month's meeting, I think we're going to have your iPads ready to hand out or at least to begin to orient you. Some of you will pick them up and have no problems. You already know what to do or you have a young child to help you.
I asked my grandchildren to help me with it.
Some of you may be like me. In those cases, the planning staff will do what we can to help you. In my case, I will refer you to someone who will be able to help you. And that is the person who helps me, and that's Ms. Ely. But I think we're going to find, as you noticed tonight, I kind of lost my screen for a moment and I had a minor crisis, but I figured it out before it got too bad. We will find sometimes there will be a tool that will confuse us, but I think overall we're going to find to be a tool that will help us. Because those plaits that you see, often in eight and a half, 11, and have trouble reading, you'll be able to blow them up, you'll be able to see it. We're going to try to make this as helpful as we can and use it as a tool. We will be wanting feedback from you as we learn how to use it. We went through many years as we worked on the paper agenda and learned how to make it work and to a point where we were comfortable with it, but if we even continue to make improvements. We will be doing the same with the electronic approach. So as we move into this new age, we're going to have to learn some things. We will have some instructions about city policy to convey to you as you receive this so that you don't make mistakes that, you know, no porn, for instance, that kind of thing. But we'll go over that. Even, we need to remind ourselves sometimes the things you don't do. But we will be having some discussions about these later. But I wanted to show you what they're going to look like and assure you that we are ready to get them to you.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Adalot?
Yes, sir. There's one more thing and it's something I think that you all can see for yourselves. I think the economy is beginning to recover. Our agendas are becoming more robust. We're beginning to see a higher level of activity. We've reviewed several plaits and plans today, which will be reflected on your next agenda during the day. And I'm seeing more sustained instead of sporadic agendas. So I think that's very encouraging. Just tonight with the apartment complex, we're seeing someone who's really ready to build. He's just trying, he's been struggling for two years to get around to it. Now he's ready. And I'm seeing that a lot more frequently and it's very encouraging from an economic standpoint. It seems to be that things are happening. We've got several things coming up. We've got, and I think you'll agree next month, I'm telling you, it's coming. It's coming back to life.
Good. That's great news.
Good to hear.
I don't think anybody here is dreading spending a little more time in here on approval applications, you know? So that'll be, that'll be a great sign for the economy. Anything else, Ms. Adalot?
That's my staff report.
Anybody?
Mr. Lamb, as a tech specialist, I think these iPads will be very beneficial to the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I'm glad you added that. Any other pertinent comments? Now we stand adjourned.